So let's see, we got a binder.
Yeah, you like it?
Is the idea then?
Keep you guys more organized?
Well, to say binders, we just take the paper out, maybe give it back to you at the end of the meeting? Just reuse it every time?
That's what my plan is. If you want to take it.
Want to talk about that?
If you.
And explain the process.
So if you want to take the pack at home with you, I don't know if you like to take all of your papers with you. I can think about that at the meeting, we'll just clip it together and I'll take the binders back and then that way when you guys come in for your new meeting, all the packets will be there. I'm gonna add a few more.
Streamlining and efficiency.
I'm all in for it.
All of them, yeah. Well, I noticed last night it kind of was a little confusing, there's a lot of people.
Well, that last packet was what.
Yeah, it was thick. So this will, you can just flip to the section that you guys are on.
You got something else to add?
I do thank you very much.
Still from last night.
It's been a long day.
Well, some days in the oddity and it's humid.
Yeah, we go from Arctic spring to middle of summer in two days.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
We pulled it August.
I'll take it today.
It's just weird.
It was really hot.
Crossed the fingers when I flipped my E C, I had to make sure it was actually gonna work. I said, you know what, you probably don't need it for just today, but I'm gonna turn around and see if it works because we might need it in a few days. I wanna get on the list.
That's fine. I'll be here every day. I have to remind you, if I smoke, smoke through.
It's like, please, please, please work because no one's gonna be as big a line this time of year, but then I'm. Hi, Rich.
Hi, Jason. Hi, Ralph.
Okay, what?
Eric. Good.
Well, with three of us, yeah, that's a quorum, right?
No.
No?
Three of us.
I forget two of you.
Oh, yeah, well, no, it would be a majority.
Is it a majority of those?
I thought we only do three?
No.
Or if you do already upset.
No, because of.
It's supposed to upset them, right?
Yeah.
Well, get excited.
I forget about that every time. Yeah, you.
Well, we got vacancies, does that count in the calculation of a quorum?
Yeah, in most cases.
It's usually the majority of the body.
Not the majority of.
Those present.
Filmed sworn in October or something.
I mean, if that was the case, majority of those present and on personals there.
But wouldn't be majority of present, but majority of sworn.
Oh. I had always thought that it was four, that's why every vote that you guys called needed four votes.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm not. He was going out of town, but I didn't think it was this.
I mean, I know Richard's not coming.
Richard is not coming.
Yeah, I got his email.
I mean, if we don't have a quorum, we can have an unofficial informational meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we can have a meeting, we just can't, uh, take any official action.
The only thing they, the only thing that's on there is really just to approve the minutes that, and then the rest is probably.
Right, so we couldn't even do that?
You can't do that, but Richard can give you all this information.
But this was a notice of public meeting, we could have information shared.
Yeah.
One thing I've been bringing up, so probably, you do all the noticing, is one of the committees, I'm on the tree friends. They've been having their meetings because it kind of predated them coming in as a city body. They've been having their meetings at River St. Joe.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the city has a policy on a public meeting and private establishment.
I was for the city.
Outside of the.
I, uh, we haven't addressed that, so.
And then there was another meeting, they were doing a budget meeting that was being held at someone's house.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. And I didn't wanna like be the heavy, I'm already the, no, I'm already Jason, Mr. No, so.
But Jason, that's where I think you were building for, because I think that that kind of stuff used to fun.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if they want you to be serious.
Maybe something official, that's any clerk about. Needing location.
Really make an entrance from the.
I'd be helpful, so it doesn't cover just like.
I mean, I was feeling okay with it, so you know, Jason, I was at someone's house, that's a little weird, like.
Right.
La Barker. Alright, so tomorrow night we're meeting in Peach's downtown, so.
I will have a conversation with Mr. Martin.
Well, that's dating you, that hasn't been there a long time.
What, uh?
He's like, you're, you're what? Recording?
I hope not, because that's how I'm coming. Okay. The first time I bring my glasses in the print big enough I can read it.
Jesus. We got a whole new thing for you, and it's much smaller, so.
We moved up a couple of notches here.
And now that you're here, we can be official.
Public hearing minutes.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna give the floor to our recordings secretary, she's gonna walk you through the whole new process. You ready?
We have a process?
We have a process.
Before anything, Jason, we have a process. If you wanna keep your stuff, just take it out of the binder at the end, and then I will, at the next meeting, have a packet ready to go.
If I leave the binder, you'll take care of it?
I'll take care of it, yeah.
How much should I gotta pay for that?
Nothing, it's just gonna help keep everybody organized. Make everyone smarter.
Well, I'll tell you what, you're looking at the right guy if you gotta keep somebody organized. Not like, uh, Mr. Lee's over there.
Jason, he's, uh.
Darker organization.
Don't, my wife would disagree with me strongly. I'm like, I spend all my energy at work and at this and other things, and when I come home, I just don't have any left.
You never knew there was speakers back there.
No?
Yeah, I was like, just walking back there, you're just standing.
Testing, one, two, three.
I gotta figure it out.
It's ever turned up?
Now, a little, it's one of my favorites for all of us.
We got the anti-vibration clamp here, I'll need a little, uh, you know, a puff, puff blocker, nice for that.
I guess I can't say. It's called a puff blocker?
No. There, there's a name for that. There's more things, more and more things hanging from the ceiling, everybody's noticing that too.
It's a new camera.
Okay. Is that a new microphone?
I think, yeah, they installed that one too.
I just think I just wanted another lifesaver.
It was very, it was really hard to do people. Around the recordings, it was very R P R.
Oh.
Number one is because that microphone is way down here, everybody that walks up there is like, tries to figure out how to raise it.
I know Andy was messing with it last night, I'm gonna try to raise.
Yeah, he's a tall guy.
What's up?
Oh, seven. I think that's fast, my phone did one minute. One minute fast, okay.
Okay, so. Let me get this straight. Today is Tuesday, eight.
Check.
Seven P M.
Check.
And you're going out of town in a couple of days, just so you know.
I gotta, I gotta get a haircut before I.
I'm not getting that far.
Alright, the public's here, so it's time to, ready to go.
Public is entered.
Alright. I'm gonna call to order. The May tenth regular meeting of the City of Buchanan Planning Commission. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. To the roll call, please.
Barker?
Here.
Martin? McDowell?
Here.
Davison?
Here.
Please.
Here.
Of course.
Let the record show that we did get notice from Richard that he would not be able to attend out of abundance of caution. His wife has, um, has an illness and he didn't wanna share. That was kind of it. Um, next we'll move to approving the agenda. So we have a draft agenda that's been prepared for tonight's meeting. Copy of it is on the table.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll support.
If you have a motion and support, any comments or discussion? To adopt the agenda, the draft agenda as prepared? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and do a voice vote for approval, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Next is public comments on any of the agenda items that we just approved. Is there any comments from the public? Just a reminder to, this is comments about the agenda, there'll be an opportunity for non-agenda items later.
I might hear both of them. When you are going through the zoning code, it sounds like you're going to do, um, be looking at the, um, ordinance book for this. I would like to have copies of the old, for the historical district library.
Before anything gets changed up here?
Before it's thrown away, I know that will eventually happen here, but I'd like to have, before they are destroyed, shredded or anything, I'd like to have them.
And you would like them sent, you would like your own personal copy, you'd like them to be put in the library?
I would like them to end up at the, um, local history room.
Okay.
He picks up agendas here. So he could pick them up here. I would be more than willing to take them over there, but if you would like Peter's, it's easy, our libraries.
I'll be able to do as you want.
I'll have all of them. If you're not gonna go through a book like this in thirty seconds.
Yeah, I think we can provide them a copy of the zoning ordinance. I spent a long time since I was, I was at the library, but last time I was there, like fifteen years ago, the previous zoning ordinance was actually in the reference section of the library.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm looking at, so these things don't get lost. At any point they're doing research, uh, oh, wow, I can't remember where I put them.
Yeah, and these are important to be kept with the zoning administrator too, because
It's a reputation.
Well, it's important to determine, to make, well, yes, to make assessments of zoning compliance issues that may have been not conforming use, legal not conforming uses, they may have been totally fine and authorized under the current zoning ordinance, but they may not be in the new one. So having a copy of the preceding zoning ordinance is going back as far as we can. Just kind of critical to both the zoning administrator's job and the zoning board appeals job, technically, so.
That's mine, I appreciate it, however, I know the filing system here.
Yeah, yeah.
Lacks a lot.
Things get lost when people come and go, for sure. But that's a good suggestion, I appreciate that.
I think we have made improvements.
Yeah, recent. Recent years.
Alright, um, we'll conclude that portion of the public comments on agenda items and go to approving the minutes. So in our binders, we have a set of minutes from, just one set of minutes from the twelfth?
Yes.
I would make a motion to go through.
Do you have public hearings, I don't know that's.
Yeah, it's.
Are those, are they combined?
It's in our binder under minutes.
Yeah.
I just, usually I see them as like the separate.
No, I put all of mine together in those public hearing, and you'll see where, on page two, you'll see where the regular meeting is called to order.
Okay. I see it. Alright, so we still have a motion, we're looking for support. We can take a minute here, we don't have a big agenda, we can take a minute. I'll support. So we have a motion with support. Discussion, comments regarding the minutes. I have a question, um. We had, during the public hearing, we had people who spoke with names and addresses, and we only have, um, some names. Does that meet the state standards or?
Yeah, so you really don't even have to say a name.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
You don't have to, parliamentary procedure. It's custom for people to put a name and address, I don't put an address down, just for safety sake for people. Um, I write them in my notes, which I keep all of my notes, but you do not even, I could put resident, I could put non-resident. I could put a first name.
Okay.
I just learned that the last class I took.
That's good.
Well, we learned something in the comments.
Thank you. That's interesting, I like the fact that here you say why you don't put it on my statement.
Yep, that's a good reason here.
Just forced someone to go to Google to find them.
Yeah, but I have other registration access, so if I need to find somebody for whatever reason.
So I noticed I'm misspelling here, I don't, it's not a big deal to me, but.
On your name?
Yeah.
I already corrected it on the other part.
Okay. Any further? Another key thing was we adopted a finding of facts with the special use approval recommendation. I see that that's the staff recording thing here, so that's good. Anything else? Alright, we'll do a, uh, vote on the motion, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor of approval of the minutes from the April twelfth, public hearings and regular meeting. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Takes us next to, um, new business, since we don't have any old business. First item is A. Joint meeting is proposed to be scheduled between the City Commission, Planning Commission, and the BAR, which is requirement of the R R C certification and potential, there's some potential agenda items such as park updates, truck routes, capital driven plans. Um, who would be speaking on that one? Is it you, Rich, to fill us in, or?
Yeah, it's informational, uh, to let you guys know that, um, we're following kind of a roadmap of best practice, that is the redevelopment ready communities program. And we are ticking off boxes, uh, as we move towards certification, which opens up more technical assistance and funding doors to the city, as well as just prepares us to engage in better and higher quality development. One of the themes, I would say, that's in, uh, local government now, is this idea of inter-agency collaboration or intergovernmental collaboration, a lot of times, uh, that's being recognized. Sometimes in grants, uh, you can earn extra points if there's more than one applicant, if it's, for example, the city of Buchanan and Buchanan Township, and Buchanan, uh, friends of, uh, McCoy's Creek Trail.
Yeah, like the trails.
Right, exactly, so. Uh, so this is encouraging this, you know, partnership concept and communication among, uh, agencies and governments. And so we wanna follow suit and schedule that meeting. And I'd be open to what agenda items you might want to discuss. Couple of things that came to my mind were, would be, uh, investments in our parks and recreation, uh, areas in Buchanan. Perhaps this concept, uh, that we're, this vision of a, uh, Buchanan St. Joseph River public access concept, mini national park concept, okay, I'd have an interesting update on that. Or other topics that you might want to discuss, maybe the, maybe the zoning, uh, update could be, uh, something that we can discuss as well, so.
Do we, is this like, just, I mean, are we required to do this once annually, or are you thinking we should do this like a couple of times a year, or?
I think once annually is what the requirement is. You know, if anyone thinks we should do it more often, we could.
This is a requirement in the R R C. Roadmap.
Remember that report card we got?
Yes.
It's green, yellow, red, so this would flip a red to green.
Okay.
In that area. The idea is to flip them all to green and get certified. Another red to green is updating of our zoning document. So we're working on that. So, you know, as we, as we entertain all the business in the pipeline of regular government, we are looking forward to, you know, long-term certification and best practice.
Rich, what do you think about? This, I just had an idea, just hit me here, under old business, like us at our regular meetings, doing a check of the status, status check on the roadmap, at least to the extent that involves planning commission related tasks, just to like monitor if anything happened, um, if anything needs to happen.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
We step it up and there's not.
Well, I mean.
Or if there's something that.
Maybe there's totally legit reasons why something didn't happen, but this week can be transparent and say, you know, we were intended this to have progress by the end of the third quarter, but it didn't actually happen very far.
That's a good reminder, always keep checking where we are, we're in a good checklist, yeah.
I like that idea.
I like that idea.
Alright.
So I can put that on our next agenda.
Sounds good.
So this, this'll be scheduled, I guess, soon, I don't know exactly when, trying to get through this week and maybe next week, we have several meetings, public meetings next week. But I just wanted to let you know it was coming and why. And also consider agenda items, if something occurs to you that you'd like to put on there.
Well, the two things that I know that the planning act requires that we haven't been doing, and I think we got called out for it on the R R C, is the cap, the annual capital improvement plan, which you do have noted, and the other was supposed to be a E N O report on the planning activities overall in the city, to the city commission. I don't know what time of year makes sense for that, like, is it just past the budget year, is it calendar year, so we may need to have some discussion, additional discussion about what timeframe
Yeah.
makes sense for that. My recollection of the reading was, it didn't say calendar year, is it like an annual, so defining annual? It's defined as a twelve month period, not a calendar period, it could be pretty much anything, so. Any other questions for Rich on, on that? Okay, and then, uh, next item under new business was the zoning code review, so the zoning ordinance, we all know as dated, two thousand and three. Definitely is in need of an update to continue to support the positive change at the city, so, um, do you wanna talk to us about the status now?
Yep, there's been some significant updates since I kind of told you the story of, uh, how we landed into this opportunity with placemakers and, um, uh, I had an initial call with their two principals, and it just kind of reaffirmed that this is just, uh, the firm that we want to be working with. And I brought that to the city commission, and the city commission unanimously approved us moving forward to engage in a contract with placemakers. And, um, today, uh, and I also updated you that we are, at the same time, pursuing, uh, a thirty thousand dollar grant with M E D C as part of redevelopment right in communities that would fund sixty percent of the price tag of this project. So it's a several, several month to a year long project, it's, this is a big deal, this is a big project. And so today, Heather and I had a preliminary call with the team, and, uh, we, they shared, uh, their, this document, uh, that I wanted you guys to take a look at. Uh, that really gives their qualifications, uh, their cover letter, their, their profile, their firm, uh, profile of their principals and the team that we'll be working with, as well, that, that includes, uh, Andrew Van Mar, who was a professor from Andrews University, who led the vision for Buchanan, who will be instrumental, I think, in, in guiding the team to, you know, the best zoning code. I think the consensus is we want it to be strong, simple, easy to, to use, and, uh, modern, you know, with, with, uh, accessible online, with, uh, visuals, and the way that a, an updated zoning code looks like. Really, this, this could be a state of the art zoning code, you know, I think we're, we selected, in my opinion, one of the best firms in the country to be working with. So, um, they've also included profiles of communities that they've worked with, as well as letters of reference. And I think noteworthy is a lot of small towns that they've worked with, uh, across the United States, as well as a really strong endorsement by State of Michigan, um, project for coastal reform from the Congress of New Urbanism, as well as the Michigan Municipal League, uh, letter of reference. Who is, uh, the firm, the organization that first led me to these guys. So, uh, we had our first call today, and we're moving forward, um, on May twentieth, they will be, the team will be arriving to Buchanan, and we're gonna en- engage in our first round of some stakeholder meetings, and, um.
So that's very soon?
Yeah, yeah.
We heard about the grant, did you get the grant?
We're tracking that, uh, Heather's handling that part of it.
So we're gonna get started without the grant?
On some public engagement, yeah. So some, some of the stakeholders that were discussed that we want to talk to is, uh, the Buchanan preservationists, the downtown proprietors, the north side neighbors, the plan commission, the city commission, uh, other, those are probably gonna be maybe some of the first people we talk to. And a lot of the, I think, model is going to be based on how we approach the community engagement with a vision for Buchanan, the Andrews Project. Why? Because it worked, and, uh, it resulted in excellent community engagement and a great project result, so we wanna kind of take that model and, and put it to use, uh, and, you know, some of the things that I think we're thinking about is is certainly downtown, uh, whether there's, whether there's, uh, code that addresses missing rental housing or P U D, code that could address corridors in Buchanan, important corridors like South Red Bud or North Red Bud. Cannabis is part of our zoning code, we're gonna have to address cannabis, and right now it's, it exists in, in zoning, in the special use section. So that's gonna be something that we're gonna talk about, uh, and, um, as well as perhaps some waterfront zoning opportunities that we discuss. So, you know, I think the intention is, we don't wanna come in and rock everybody's world and change, massive, make massive changes, but we want to, um, you know, take, uh, our existing code, update it, and, you know, put it into twenty twenty-two clothes and. put it into nineteen twenty-two, um, close and, and make it just a really great tool that anticipates the next wave of development in Buchanan, so. I'm feeling very good about the team and I'm gonna really approach it the way I approached the Andrews Project, which was community engagement. Let's talk to the people that we need to talk to. Let's make sure that you guys are updated, um, I'll make sure the city commission's updated. And then, you know, at some point, like the master plan, we'll have review periods, we'll have a draft, and then we'll eventually move towards the adoption process that's included. And the consultation fee is then bringing us through the adoption of the ordinance, so, um, passing the ordinance is ord- is law. And, uh, again, this process we anticipate to be between nine months and a year, so.
There's a lot of state law, state requirements for zoning ordinances. Has placemakers done any city zoning orders in the state of Michigan before or are we the first?
No, they've, they're all over.
There's one actually, there's an example here on page twenty-three.
I saw that, but that, that wasn't a zoning order, that was a plan A on the city.
Yeah, they, they not only have done work in Michigan, but they have basically wrote the book best practice for Michigan.
That was with the Congress. That was, this was work in Michigan was for the Congress for the new group.
Right.
Not necessarily the city. So I mean, I'd like that, asking references of, and maybe, uh, well, I'm sure that they, I got it publicly posted, it's transparency and all that, it's part of their, their behavior, but just to get a flavor for like what it looks like. It looks like maybe it's graphic heavy, which would be awesome, because that was something that's totally deficient in my current life.
We talked about that today. I told them I want visuals. I want it to be simple and I want it to be strong. There's not, right now, I go to the ordinance we have and I don't get strong direction or it's silent, you know, just. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that are coming up too, like I got a request for solar, uh, on a historic home in Buchanan. Now, I don't know if our current zoning addresses something else.
Is it on, on stand in the yard or is it on the roof?
No, it's on the roof.
Yeah, but never.
Well, I'm looking at references, a lot of it, I don't see a specific one where they wrote the zoning ordinance. I see a lot of planning, master planning, those sort of master plans and concrete development.
Yeah, I can assure you that they have.
Yeah, so, um, maybe if you find some cities, they may not be five thousand, but some, some communities.
Where they drafted the ordinance on.
Yeah, just to take a look at, like their final product, the visuals, the, the way they got organized.
It's a good idea.
Just, and to show that we aren't going to be the, I don't know, the guinea pig for them learning Michigan zoning law. I'm sure that they've got some very bright people, but, um, no matter how bright they are, they're still learning through. So it'd be awesome if we weren't the first, is all I'm saying. And it sounds like you said that they've done several, so.
Yeah, I, I, I will talk to them, um, give me an honest example of an actual code.
That would be great. One big advantage of going with them, you know, I said something that was something of concern to, to ask about. One advantage I see with going with them is the fact they know Buchanan pretty well already because of their engagement with the Andrews Project, so. There's less to learn, I heard about that, because they know a lot about our city already, what our goals are.
That was really the deal sealer for me.
Yeah.
I mean, where else can you get someone who has worked intensively for five months in your city? On every neighborhood and, I mean, it's just, to bring that perspective, he's a regular collaborator with this team, so. I think that is, uh, sets us up for success, for sure.
Again, again, to Jason's point, it'd be nice to have the whole code, uh, issue, the whole code book instead of just an example. And we kinda need to see that, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've got some frame of reference for what the deliverables come with.
Yeah, because I'd like to see the format, they use some formats, a lot easier to notice.
What is the date for when we're anticipating hearing about the grant, if we're successful or not?
Uh, I don't have an actual date, but Heather's working on that right now.
Okay. Will it be before next week?
I would suspect so, yes, sorry.
Um, if we could just get a communication on how the status is when we find out, will I ask to find a question that'd be awesome?
Sure.
Anyone else have questions for Rich about the zoning ordinance update?
No, but it's exciting, long-term comments.
It's a big project.
Yeah, it is, that's great. Great.
Alright. We'll move on to the subcommittee report, so, um, we have a report from the Quay Creek Trail. Wanna give us your summary on that or?
Well, I'm, I'm glad to do that, thank you. As you can see by the attendance, I wasn't at the meeting, so that's probably why it went so soon. But I did highlight some, uh, areas in the, uh, and so I'm glad to share real quickly. Uh, again, uh, I highlighted Heather Grace and Jerry Flinner, uh, viewed the budget information and currently had a cash balance of one twenty-fourteen, four thirty-three, sixty-one. Uh, again, that was great that Heather sat down with Jerry and went over that and took the time to do that. Uh, fundraising events over at St. Joe, which is obviously very involved with the trail and the trail committee. They did a small fundraiser. Uh, Marcy Hamilton was in attendance at the meeting. And of course, she talked about the application, uh, Rich might even know some more about that. I guess that's gonna be known, uh, till in October sometime. And that's about the phase three trail extension.
We also have a phase two in, in the hopper, waiting on that too.
Okay. Again, uh, Marcy Hamilton, Chris Martin was south of us, uh, Plan Commission. Plan Commission, uh, City Manager Heather Grace, Rich Murphy, Susan Denome, I believe. Uh, White Men, Jerry Flinner, Brian Daughery and Kevin Stack, they are all working on that, uh, request for a million dollar trail extension. Uh, for Walt Road, does anyone buy that? I know, yeah. And then, uh, community projects, uh, looks like Fran Tuitt, uh, Suzanne, you know, Jerry Flinner, all, uh, working on community projects. There's four new composite benches that will be installed along the trail. And then lastly, uh, looks like Jerry Flinner and the city crew have been working hard on some of the amenities along the trails and rigeters with railings and decks. So it's a very active group, very committed, very committed group. It's, it's great to be a part of that.
On that phase three, just so you know how committed they are, is we found out like at the last minute, literally like on Sunday, that Upton's office released this opportunity and we had an emergency meeting Monday and submitted by the end of this Monday.
Wow.
So, and, and it was collaborative because we couldn't, the city couldn't submit because we had, I had already s- submitted a grant to Upton's office, so the local department took one for the team and Buchanan needs to submit on it. And so we, but with par- with partners of the city and Quay Creek Trail. And so I threw up a Hail Mary for public access money and Upton's aide came back to me and told me Fred wants to fund it, but you can't do it through this bucket, you gotta do it through the other bucket. So then Heather picked up the ball, cause I was out of town. And she resubmitted my application in the other bucket and he said, awesome.
Really?
So I don't know, oh, we asked for four hundred grand, so I don't know. I guess my message is we're getting a lot better at mining the money, so. Because we're working as a team every time, we could be like Minuteman. We already have the work done and we just resubmitted, so. I mean, it's exciting because we're, our, our applications are well-done, competitive and, you know, we're waiting on the M.D.A. Like our, uh, the DNR grant for the trail, we could get that. I think we have a great application. We have the phase three now. Now we have the Upton grant for the, the, uh, public access and ecological restoration vision, you know. And, um, so I think we have our, we're engaging our delegation, our federal and state delegation, elected officials. We're just painting the story that, you know, Buchanan is this place that is trying to come back. They had a rough pass with, you know, jobs, job loss in the eighties, but they're really have positive momentum and moving forward and that story is starting to resonate in, you know, these, so we'll just keep doing what we're doing. Some really good people working with us on this grant.
Sounds like it, thank you.
Alright, I have a report from the Buchanan Tree Friends, um, from their April meeting. So their big, uh, the big initiative in April was the Arbor Day planting at Ottawa School. Um, you may have seen photos in paper or in school publications, but lots of kids involved. Staff members were involved and the tree friends were involved. They planted twenty trees, um, around the grounds at Ottawa. Um, of those, uh, fifteen trees were like newly purchased and funded through donations and then there were five trees that were kind of, um, leftover trees from past projects that were being stored in front of it. So very successful, got good press, good PR, got the kids involved. There was some, you know, learning about the benefits of trees and, um, for all the different values that they bring. The, um, the other big project is they're working on white pine trees for the high school. Um, historically, the high school has had evergreen trees, um, planted or, and it goes all the way back to when it was Buchanan Union School and it was a square parcel, it was circled by multiple rows of evergreen trees, so. The yearbook is actually called Pines. And, um, they've dwindled to less than fifteen, I think, out there, so.
Those are white pines right now?
Those are not currently white pines. I brought that up, but I didn't wanna be, I didn't wanna slow, slow down their momentum. So there's, I think, plenty of room to put in fir trees, spruce trees and to get some variety.
What are the ones that are there? You know what they are, you're an arborist.
Yeah.
It's one of your many hats.
They're, they're Doug first.
They're Doug's work can.
They're all sprouting spindly because they were shaded out. There used to be some big maple trees in front of the school, like sugar apples, basically. That kind of shaded them out, plus they were planted very close together. So they're a little bit of crowding, but, um, there will be opportunity to get diversity in the conference out there. But for this, this hundred year anniversary of the building, it's part of the bucking thing, I'll tell you about it. Which is the state?
Deer will be.
I, if the deer are coming up in the neighborhood, they're gonna come to them.
White pines, I'll tell you that.
Yes, they do.
They get big.
They're city?
City deer.
I'm sure we definitely got.
City deer. City deer, they, they come right into the.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
They stand in our.
I saw it on River Street on the stage.
Yeah.
Wow. And city dogs.
Well, I guess they'll cross that river and come to you. If there's too much deer browse, then they'll have to do something else. That's it. Um, they had a budget meeting at Brian's house, which, uh, previously mentioned to the mayor that we probably need to formalize. Now that they're a public body, um, having it, uh, in a public space, it's accessible, it's accessibility requirements, has, you know, all that stuff, so. Update on the watering, so they brought out, uh, they'd like to buy a watering tank that will help in that most grants, um, plus it's best practices that in the first year of planting, that you provide additional watering for the trees, because they're stressed out from being returned to plant it. So looking to get a watering tank, um, price is four hundred dollars. They voted to purchase it contingent on having a budget item for it.
I hope you have a tank with water box and that itself.
Uh, the minutes don't mention.
Yeah.
Can I find out? You got a line on some watering tanks? Are you curious?
We got one last.
I'll try to remember to ask.
It just seems, yeah, it seems like a watering tank out of the vision sometimes, it's.
They might be thinking one that, I'm not sure if it's in a flatbed or if it's on wheels of a wagon, a water wagon.
Gotcha.
Oh, I'm not sure. And then the last item, I'll, I'll, there's two more items. The second to last item is, um, they have a tribute trees program. And, um, it's kind of, uh, as you go, someone wants to do a tribute tree and they make a donation and they, then they proceed to do the tribute tree. So they've got some requests, um, in honor of, um, Ed and Marie Canus want to do a little leaf linden, oh, sorry, it's in memory of Dale McBane. So, um, there's a, I just wanted to bring attention to the tribute tree program that they have. And then lastly, an update, uh, they got a grant to do a city tree inventory, which is going to inventory the condition, size and species of, of all the trees that are in city-owned street right of way, and I believe the may name mentioned to the parks, city properties, city properties broadly.
I believe it's incomplete, I think they're waiting for the final report and I think the actual survey is done.
Yeah, there was a note here that the masons kicked in an extra five hundred dollars to help match the grant that the DNR sent us, so it was nice. And that concludes the report of the.
Can I speak to something of, of the trees?
You speak for the trees?
Are you the one?
You know, I've worked up on a pavilion in Dicker Park and two young trees were planted next to the basketball court. And they said, you know, that's not a good idea, they're growing because the leaves bawl on the basketball court, which is not a good thing. They're young enough now, they should be moved, I mean, probably a big.
How close are they to edge of court?
Probably twenty feet, but still, once they start getting bigger, the leaves come down and they're not gonna be a problem for probably two or three years, but they should be relocated right now, I mean, before they gets too far.
What's a caliber of?
Probably.
Couple inches?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no.
Oh, it's small.
Oh, yeah, they're open shell.
I wonder what species they're, since they're gonna get big for. Sometimes there's ornamental trees that don't.
I don't know, you're the tree guy. I just know it looks like a tree.
I'll do a drive, I'll do a drive by.
Do a drive by, take a look, I think there's only two or possibly three, but you may want to.
Are they blooming right now?
I, last time I was up there was a week and a half, next one probably.
Yeah, let's do a drive by.
Take, take a quick look and see.
They're a smaller maturing species, it might not be. But I definitely get your point about a big shade.
We brought it by the, the folks I'm working with in the neighborhood, you know, so. Why, why they have trees that's difficult?
Shade in summer, that's ability to trees. I don't know, I wasn't involved with it, so, but I will see what happens.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Alright. Any further questions about the committee reports? Okay, let's move on to, um, our final comments as we move toward adjournment here. Uh, Rich, do you have any, um, comments for today? Oh, sorry, I see a poll, hold on.
Go ahead.
My apology. Um, we have an opportunity for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We have a couple members of the public? No comments, okay, thank you. No comments, okay, thank you. All right, now, sorry, Rich.
Would you guys be available for a meeting on May twentieth?
Not you, God.
You're out of vacation. Uh, because we, we may wanna call, I gotta talk to Heather about it. We may wanna call a joint meeting with the commission and plan commissions and they can talk to you guys.
That's a Friday, right?
I am not available.
It is a Friday.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it could be during the day.
It's cheaper golf outing day.
This is Michigan Track Regional State.
Okay.
And I am going to chair my daughters.
Okay, so. I'll have to work on whether we do another meeting or a Zoom meeting or, is that, I just want them to present directly to you guys and the commission. Introduce themselves and their approach to the project at some point, early in the process.
Present on this thing here?
Yeah. We're still gonna engage with all those groups that day because they're flying into town to do that. And so I will be in touch with you on the plan, I'm gonna discuss that with Heather. But I think that's all I have.
They can't make it on a Tuesday at any time? Twenty-four?
Well, they were already coming into town twentieth of May.
Oh, that's why, that's why I got you.
It's a, this is a rough weekend because it's also graduation.
Friday's a kind of tough day.
Twenty-second. This is what my family brothers is. Charles took it.
It's the third.
Oh, no, sorry, it's the twenty-seventh. What was that, was it there between a baccalaureate and the commencement?
Baccalaureate is a Spanish word.
Like, what's the difference, I didn't have that one as well.
The baccalaureate is usually, almost like a religious ceremony.
Yes, church service before the graduation, it's usually the week ahead of the graduation.
All right, so graduating, I say graduation itself is the twenty-seventh.
They didn't have one either, but I know why they wouldn't invite me.
Sir, if you graduated, you can and you had one, you just did not.
Probably I wasn't invited yet.
And it was a long time ago.
Anything else, Rich?
No, that's all.
All right. We'll move on to our closing comments, we'll start with Ralph tonight.
I have none, thank you.
Kevin?
What can I highlight, I mean, Rich, I'm so impressed with the chase of all these brands. I mean, how many years have we sat here and was told that there's not even any grants available to apply for and everything else? You know, Rich, you really stepped up and, and fared all of these things out and you are very aggressive in chasing them. But I just wanted to thank you for doing that, I mean, it's a huge difference.
Thanks.
And putting the teams together too, and I know it's not you alone, but you've seen the orchestration a lot of it and know how to get this. So I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
John? I'll just second Kevin's advice, I think the city administration staff did a great job, not only, not only brands, but lots of different brands. Their record keeping is much better, your, the minutes that we're giving are phenomenal.
Yeah, Kelly's wonderful.
And I'm, I'm, I mean, they're just, they're doing everything in Japanese. I think you're probably perfect.
And I don't have any comments. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't make that motion, I was doing.
I'll support.
All right, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
So you guys kept my reminder email for the C B A meeting?
Yes.
Eighteenth at six?
I'll always stay up there.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get it. When did you send it?
So you're not on TV.
No, I'm not, I mean.
But I did send you, because there's a meeting Wednesday for design review, Buchanan, sorry.
I thought you were.
What else was it, design review?
Um, glassworks, signage and for the windows you already put in. And, and thank God they're okay. But the, this home source group, gentlemen, to these, who wants to put in their windows?
Just for you. Did we get a packet out of that? I just have a.
Yeah.
Okay. Does, does Varian's request?
There is a, just so you know, there's massive amounts of pavement work in my pipeline right now. I feel like I'm gonna forget something or like miss something, so when I do.
Take it easy on it.
Well, take it easy on me more, you have to be.
The variance, or does only work with it?
Oh, what, yeah, what's the variance?
So I'm giving you sign at high school. That they asked me to do the hundred year celebration and it's incorporating a message center, but also it's, and we're building a housing for the, the bell that was up at high school.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's science in the corner now?
Yeah, okay.
And because of the size of the bell, I have to build, I had to get the sign so that it's taller than what it's on and it's more for foot. Because I'm trying to keep it up off the ground and the new, the on used base. And the message center is expensive, I'm gonna keep it out of the snow, so we have to put a base and then this huge housing with this bell that weighs some. So.
Good luck.
Thanks.
I forgot to mention this during our subcommittee before.